All right. Hello. Good evening. Welcome to this April 6th meeting, virtual meeting of the West Orange Board of Education. Mr. Calavano.
Mr. Alper.
How are you?
Well called.
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Merklinger. Mr. Rothstein. Mr. Rothstein.
Unmute.
There we go. It was hidden. I'm here. Thank you.
Mrs. Trick Scales.
Present.
And Mrs. Tunncliff. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mindful of your courts.
I pledge allegiance. Notice of meeting. Please take notice that adequate notice this meeting has been provided for in the following manner. That a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on March 19th and April 4th, 2020. That said notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and a Star Ledger. That said notice was posted in a lobby administration building of the Board of Education.
All right. Thank you. Before we get going, just a quick, you know, mention that obviously our thoughts are with everybody who's been personally affected or has had family or other loved ones affected by the coronavirus. And especially that our thoughts right now are with Coach Joe Soriano and, you know, we wish him the best and a speedy recovery. So with that, may I have a motion for consideration of the public meeting minutes of March 19th?
All motion.
Second.
All right. Mr. Calavano.
I'm sorry. I didn't get the second.
Jennifer Tunn.
Thank you. Mrs. Merklinger.
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein.
Yes.
Mrs. Tunncliff.
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. Okay. Dr. Cascoun, Superintendent Report.
Yes. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our first virtual meeting. It is, it is great to be here with all those in attendance. I think it fills myself as well as the board with a sense of satisfaction that we're able to continue to move the district forward in terms of our governance and operations amidst some of these uncertainties, you know, and in fact, that has been kind of an ongoing theme with regard to what we've been doing here in the school district is as we, outside of the school district and the world around us, as there is a great degree of uncertainty, to really have, we've strived here in the district to try and remove as many of those question marks as possible. As you know, we're, we're now in, in week two of our, our e-learning. And things are going very well and that, that has everything to do with, with, with our entire community. Obviously, we, we took our time. We appreciated your understanding as we moved most of our spring break, I should say, until, you know, we moved that up to give us ample time to prepare. And I think that facilitated as smooth an initial implementation as possible. I can tell you that, like I said, it continues to be a team effort. If we are successful, and I think we are experiencing a good degree of success thus far, it has to do with everyone, including our parents, obviously, our students coming together. We receive really constructive and helpful feedback on a daily basis. And I can tell you that on a daily basis, our teachers are meeting with, with principals, our leadership team is meeting on a regular basis. And we are really processing all that feedback and putting that and taking that into consideration in the ongoing adjustment of how we're, we're doing business here with our e-learning. One of the big developments, developments rather, was in moving forward with Google meets. And again, we appreciated your patience as we really were wanting to think through that and make sure that we were doing it well. We are using Google meets for that. And I think with some of the things that are coming out more recently with some of the caveats and relative to Zoom, I think that, that the wisdom of that has been borne out. One of the things we've also said all along was that when we move forward with this, we wanted to ensure a high degree of equity and access for our, our student or parent population. You were obviously privy to, you know, the rolling out of 700 Chromebooks of working together with the Office of Emergency Management in ATNT to secure 150 Wi-Fi devices which we have been distributing. And we are getting to houses if we need to. We have a number of daily food drops that are happening at houses. We've delivered technology directly to people's houses. And so we're really utilizing an individualized approach to ensure that as we move forward with this e-learning, that we can feel confidently about the equity and access and also the quality of, of what we're delivering to students. And so I think we are in as good a place as we could expect. And obviously, we know that, you know, for the extreme long term, this is not a paradigm that we, we know would work because our brick and mortar buildings and the interactions that occur within those buildings, whether it's staff to student or student to student, are not replaceable and they never will be. And I think we will learn many things as we walk away from this experience. And, you know, and in terms of think ways in which we can grow and we can learn as, as an institution. But I think contrary to what some folks have said about how this will usher in the obsolescence of public schools, I think it will only further reinforce the absolute essential nature of, of brick and mortar public schools for many, many of the students who attend them. One, one thing I want to highlight on the agenda is, is, you know, and recognize the work of a group of teachers and administrators who are, who are on this agenda for approval. And they were a group of teachers and staff members who worked around, really around the clock over the spring break, their spring break to get this e-platform ready to go. I'd like to publicly also recognize the efforts of Mr. Mendez, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, who has really been out in front of this thing and, and really been, been a facilitator of it. But thanks to all those staff and who continue to support staff through the, the e-help desk. I'd like to talk a little bit about budget before, you know, I, I offer some concluding thoughts. So we did approve the preliminary budget at the last, at the last board meeting. And to the critical observer, you might have noticed that, you know, the, the detail on that presentation was perhaps not as much as it had been in similar presentations from previous years. And, and that was to some extent intentional because, you know, the die is not necessarily cast in, in these dynamic times. And I'm going to give you one example. Mr. Calavano, our Business Administrator and I recently had a meeting with our benefits coordinators, our benefits brokers rather, and got some rather positive news in terms of some, some potential gains, financial gains that we could experience as a result of shifting our benefits plans to Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield. And it was to the tune of, you know, $400,000. And so obviously, you know, getting news like that has implication in terms of, of cuts which we originally thought we might have had to make, not necessarily having to make those. And so we've kind of gone not completely back to the drawing board, but we have gone back to deliberations in terms of things we might be able to do. You know, the, the preliminary budget does involve cuts. It does involve cuts of certain, certain staff lines and positions. And so we're really trying to be as mindful as possible of that and walking a line for both fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers as well as being as understanding and sensitive to the needs of our fantastic employees and understanding that there are a lot of financial hardships out there. So we are, we are continuing to have kind of internal conversations. We are in the process of scheduling a, an upcoming public work session on the budget. And we expect that at the April 20th meeting, we'll be able to present, you know, some of the updates and, and perspective changes we might make to the original budget that was accepted at the last board meeting. So in closing, you, you may have noticed I've kind of entered into an interesting partnership with Yoga Playhouse here in West Orange, a part of our focus on mindfulness, something that I, I, I champion fully. And I think moving forward as in the district, it's something that you're going to see more and more of as we place a keen emphasis on our environment and the mental and social emotional well-being of not only our students and our staff. And so in, in wanting to kind of lead from in front in this regard, I've been doing a mindful Monday exercise. And so if you haven't seen it, I encourage you to, to check that out. It's on the social media platforms. And it's again, part of that focus on maintaining a balance in our, in our mindset and staying as calm as possible through these times. And, and in closing, I would just echo Mr. Alper's comments relative to Coach Joe Soriano, who is obviously an absolute icon within our community, has family members that teach within our school district. And so send best wishes out to him and all of our, our families who have been impacted by this. We are thinking of you and praying of you during this time. And I would also just like to also acknowledge the passing of Principal Brown from the Caldwell School District. And let the Caldwell, the town of Caldwell and the West Caldwell, West Caldwell Caldwell School District, let them know we are thinking of you at this very sad time and we are here for you should you need any kind of assistance. And that is my report.
All right. Absolutely. Thank you. Up next, questions from the public on agenda items only. If you have a question or comment on anything that appears on the agenda, go ahead and follow those instructions. And the moderator will announce you. Once you come in, please let us know your name and address for the record and then you'll have your three minutes.
Okay. I do not see anyone with their hands raised at this time.
Okay. Seeing no one for agenda comment, obviously, there's the other public comment section at the end of the meeting. So we'll close agenda comments and we'll move on. Up next, personnel. May I have a motion for items one through three?
So moved.
And seconded.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Calavano.
Mrs. Merklinger.
Yes, with the exception of A2, Jeanne Kilon, abstaining from, but the rest, yes.
Mr. Rothstein.
Yes.
Mrs. Tunncliff. Vice President Trick Scales.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. All right. Up next, finance, special services, item one and business office items one through six. I'll do item seven for business office separately. So special services number one and business office one through six. May I have a motion?
Did you do curriculum, Ken?
Did I? I missed curriculum completely. I apologize. We'll go back. Curriculum, item one. May I have a, may I have a motion?
All motion.
And seconded.
Thank you. Mr. Calavano.
Mrs. Merklinger.
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein.
Yes.
Mrs. Tunncliff.
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. Okay. Now, special services, item one and business office items one through six. May I have a motion?
So moved.
I will second.
All right. Any discussion on those?
Um, just maybe if John or Scott would like to give a little bit of background on synergistic for the folks that may be watching or listening in.
Thank you.
So we actually found another way of trying to reduce our energy costs beyond the ESA program that we, we originally had. This program helps the school district minimize energy consumption, consumption by using our equipment and buildings in a most efficient manner for our needs while improving comfort for the occupants. They have produced results unique among energy conservation companies and is the only company offering combination of tools, training, technology, engineering, analysis that are guaranteed to reduce our energy savings. They create a culture of conversation, conservation, training our staff to optimize every energy using system across the district and to make decisions to increase comfort and reduce energy costs. Unlike the ESA program, ESA program, we actually, we did a lighting retrofit, retrofit throughout the entire district. We replaced some roofs. We buttoned up the envelope of the buildings. This has nothing to do with construction. This only has to do with conservation. So we will hire an energy manager. That person will get to know our buildings. They will go through the buildings throughout the night, different type, different times of the night, the weekends, make sure things that are supposed to be off are off, things that are supposed to be on are on. And they will begin training staff to start conserving energy. They have a guarantee. They guaranteed us within a five-year period of $1 million, $14,000, a million, one, $1,014,000. And each year, the guarantee actually increases. It starts with 121,000. And then the year five, we will be seeing a $263,400 savings. So what actually occurs is that we have our energy line. We pay for our energy, but we also pay for their fixed monthly fee and whatever the energy specialist fee is. And the net of that will come to 121,200 for the first year of savings and it's guaranteed. So if we can't make those savings, then they have to cut the check for the balance of those savings. I did speak to two school districts, Long Branch and Manchester. They both were very pleased with the company. They actually seen more of the savings than anticipated. And I believe there are several others that are joining them at this point. They are endorsed by New Jersey School Administrators Association, which they really don't endorse any company. They only endorse this company and also ACES, which is another energy savings program. But we don't participate in ACES. We actually do a reverse bid for our purchase of energy and gasoline. And it's actually saves us more money by us doing the reverse action. So I think at this point, it'll definitely be beneficial for us to move ahead with this program.
Mr. Calavano. When you talk about the working with staff, could you be specific as to which staff you're referring to?
I think it's going to be all staff. The majority of the staff will be the building grounds staff. But I think we're going to get teachers involved, maybe having some types of projects on how we can save energy, maybe have contests from one school, you know, which school can save more energy than the next, you know, the other schools. So I think they're going to try to talk to all, like even the children, I think they'll have a session with the children about energy conservation.
So this is helping us in our quest for sustainability.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Which is something we said we were very interested in doing, narrowing our footprint. So good. Good. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Just on item number seven, if you could speak a little to what the resolution is.
Right. I split that one out. So we'll cover that. I figured I would want to read that. So I got through the rest. That's okay. Anything else on one through six?
Yes. Sorry. Just one, one more thing on the synergistic contract. I'm assuming that at the end of the five years, that completes our obligation. And we would reassess at that time whether there's a benefit to renewing or whether we've accomplished what our goals are moving forward.
The two, that's correct. But I spoke to the two districts that I mentioned earlier. They ended their contract after five years and they're still seeing results. So I don't think we're going to see, I don't think there's going to be need for us to renew after the five years. I think after five years of, of being programmed, I guess, to save energy, we're all, you know, there's not going to be a need to have the company any longer, but we'll continue seeing results.
And, and I believe that you already mentioned this. Thank you, by the way, for the, for the great explanation upfront and for answering questions earlier about this. The, the, there's no equipment that we're purchasing. There's no requirement for any upgrade in infrastructure. This is strictly about monitoring the usage with the existing equipment that we have and making sure that we're utilizing it the most efficiently. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Ms. Tunncliff, did you have anything? You're not on my screen unless I scroll down.
Wait, let me just make sure I'm unmuted. No. Okay. I am. No, I think Gary and Mr. Rothstein, Mr. Calavano, and Ms. Trick Scales have adequately addressed some of the same issues I had. So thank you.
Mr. Calavano.
Mrs. Merklinger. Mr. Rothstein.
Yes.
Mrs. Tunncliff.
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. Okay. Up next is item seven, which is a proposed resolution to oppose the delay in the transmission of quarterly property tax revenue to school districts. The background here is that on March 23rd, the Assembly unanimously passed a bill which allows municipalities to apply for the ability to delay certain financial related deadlines. There's a lot of good intent there, in my opinion. Part of that is if you need, if you have a property tax deadline of a certain date and you want to give people an extended grace period, for instance, that's mentioned specifically in the bill. There's also a single half sentence in there that also gives municipalities the ability to, again, apply through the Department of Community Affairs to delay the quarterly transmission of property tax revenues to school districts. So all the tax revenue that the school district raises is collected by the township, which then quarterly makes those payments to the school district. So statewide, this has created some concern because of the idea that there will be districts that are left short and are going to have real problems meeting their bills if this becomes necessary in their municipality. It's sort of a chicken and the egg problem, maybe, because if they're not able to collect tax payments from people who are out of work, then they may not have money to put forth anyway. But, you know, my belief is that it's important to let the Senate and the governor, which haven't yet taken this up, know that this is an area of concern and school boards, New Jersey School Boards Association has encouraged districts to approve measures like this to sort of get that message out there. I'm happy to read the whole thing if people want. I think we all have it though, and since the audience also has it on their screen, I'm going to suggest that that's not necessary and ask for a motion. And then if there's a second, we can have further discussion on if desired or just vote.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion?
I, I just wanted to reiterate that I think it's important other school districts throughout the state are also passing resolutions. And I think it's important that we join in with our fellow districts and school boards in making sure that our school district is solvent and that we don't have any dire effects with the taxes being withheld.
I agree. And I should mention too, we're scheduling a liaison meeting for probably in the next week or so to get together with Ms. Merklinger and myself and Michelle Castellino from the Town Council and the Superintendent Business Administrator and the Chief Financial Officer, John Gross from the Township to try to get a sense of what the township thinks the census of going to be. I mean, I think it's impossible to predict right now. But, you know, I think we can get a sense of where everything is as we head into this.
Right. And just further, we know that the Senate is in the process of coming up with another stimulus package to help states and municipalities. So everything is kind of fluid right now.
Right.
Yeah.
President Alper. Um, just one thought. Well, not even a thought, but looking at, you know, our, our schedule, our tax levy payment schedule and this resolution, this resolution saying quarterly, we receive monthly payments from the township. But we receive usually on the 15th of each month. So I spoke to Mr. Gross, who is the Township CFO. And we're in agreement, both of us, that, you know, we have a great relationship. So we're going to work together. So if we need some money so we can make payroll, he'll get, he'll get it to us somehow. If he needs it, then I'll tell him to keep whatever he needs at that point so he can pay his bill. So we're going to work together when we, you know, to get through all this regardless of this resolution is passed or not.
No doubt, no doubt. And I think it's important to, to say, you know, I'm not a big fan in general of, you know, resolutions that have no teeth. But I think that when you have one that, you know, many districts statewide are putting in, you know, the idea here really isn't to say that there's anything, you know, that we're concerned about with our relationship with this township, but that we know that, you know, many of the 600-ish school districts in the state will be in, you know, dire straits if this happens. So, you know, we want to sort of show our support on that level, I would say.
Just a request. I'm sorry. Can we, can we advance the screen so that the public can see the resolution part of, of this on the agenda?
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none. Mr. Calavano.
Mrs. Merklinger.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Rothstein.
Yes.
Mrs. Tunncliff.
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. All right. Next, no reports. So we'll move on to public comment. If you have a comment or a question on anything, whether on the agenda or otherwise, you can follow the instructions that'll be on screen shortly and raise your hand. And once you're announced, you can let us know. Once you come into the room and are unmuted, you can let us know your name and address for the record and you'll have your three minutes.
Hey, thank you very much. I have Adam Kramer. You are unmuted. Hold on. It's going to ask to. Hold on one second, please. I think he might be pushing it when I'm pushing it. Hold on. If he could not push anything at the moment, Adam. I am unmuted. Is it asking you to unmute if you can put the join, push the join audio button on the bottom? Okay. Because I'm having problems with his audio, I'm, I'm going to promote him to a panelist. So he will be on video. So this way we can do it that way. It's not letting him do so. I'm going to promote him to a panelist. And he is no longer in there. He is there. Okay. Adam, it might be asking you to unmute yourself. Allow me to unmute you. There we go. Adam, can you hear us?
Yes.
There we are. Thank you, Adam. Okay.
I don't know if you could see me.
Nope. We can hear you. We're good.
Okay. Um, I wish to, first of all, I could not attend last week's budget proceed meeting. I wish to respectfully dissent as to this claim of fiscal responsibility. Looking at the numbers, inflation was low. Enrollment was the same. State aid grew substantially and the tax levy went up more than 2%. I just don't see a math that says that that's fiscal responsibility. You're spending more than almost every other district per pupil. You're spending more than most suburban districts in Essex County. I just don't see the fiscal responsibility here. I've spoken about this for years. We have one of the highest tax levies and biggest burdens in just about anywhere, and you're raising the taxes again. And you're doing it in a time when the economy is a mess. Businesses are shut down. I mean, one of the biggest taxpayers in the town is the manor. They're closed. Another big is the hotels. We have four of them. They're basically closed. We have a lot of people out of work wondering if they're going to make a mortgage, you know, a loan, a tax payment. We have landlords that aren't collecting from tenants, won't be able to pay taxes, and you're raising the tax bill? I, I just think that's a huge mistake. I think this is a time when you have to really prioritize and make some tough decisions about what's really, really critical and what's, what we have to scale back on. You're not in regular times. You have years just raised the taxes faster and faster to the point where we're known for being a very, very high tax town. And I just think what you're doing is really bad policy and really just, you know, kind of, well, not kind of insulting, but blatantly insulting to the people who for years have paid, you know, huge, huge tax bills and now need a little help. And I'm really upset with what this board is doing and what this administration is doing. And I think what you're doing is really wrong with the budget and really harmful to this community. I get it. Schools have to be funded, but you don't need $171 million approximately for less than 7,000 students. If you need that much money, you're just spending. You're not budgeting. And it's just really wrong under any time to do this, but especially in this time during the midst of a pandemic with huge economic implications. This is just so wrong what you're doing. And I really think you have to go back to the drawing board and do things differently. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I do not have any other hand raises unless people are waiting for Adam to finish speaking. Do we have anyone else? Do we have anyone else? If you're on your phone line, we do have a phone caller. You can push pound nine, excuse me, star nine. Okay, we have no one else at this time. Mr. Alper, you heard me?
Lauren, Mr. Alper seems to have made an attendee.
Oh. Okay. That was the... Okay, yes. Sorry about that, Mr. Alper. You did raise your hand. Okay. There we are. Sorry about that, Mr. Alper.
No worries.
You can unmute yourself at this point. There you go.
No worries. I figured raising my hand was the easiest way to...
No, it was. What happened was the list of people switched, just as soon as I was putting Adam back to attendee, and you slipped right in there.
No worries.
Yeah, so at this time, I do not have anyone else raising their hand.
All right, seeing no one further, we'll close that section. Dr. Cascone, anything?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be appropriate just to kind of, you know, make a few comments, you know, to honor and dignify Mr. Kramer's perspective. And, you know, certainly would invite Mr. Calavano, you know, to, you know, correct my numbers or weigh in specifically from a financial standpoint. So just to give, and we spoke to this a little bit during the preliminary budget approval at the last meeting. So, you know, not just West Orange, but all school districts are faced with an immediate challenge when it comes to developing a budget. And that is that, you know, the increase in costs, before we've even begun to talk about staff or materials or programs or anything of this nature, we immediately talk about what is going to be the increased expense to support health benefits, you know, health, medical, dental, prescription benefits. What is the percentage increase and what does that translate into in terms of dollars? And then what is the percentage increase that is necessary to support basically the increases in pay as specified under the collective bargaining agreements? And so, you know, before, right off the bat, that led to approximately an $8 million increase in our overall budget. If you look at the tax levy, you know, if we were to go up to the 2% cap, that would have given us about, that did give us about $2.5 million. And then we did, in fact, get an additional $2.5 million in state aid, which gave us a deficit of approximately $2.5 million that we needed to find within the budget. So if we were to have not gone up to cap, then that would have been an additional $2.5 million that needed to be found. And if we used no bank cap, then we would have been between $5 and $6 million. Now, having been on the inside of this budget development process and staffing aside, just looking in terms of our operating expenses, you know, and we've used a number of creative approaches, you know, when it comes to decreasing custodial overtime, decreasing security overtime, and a number of different things to save as much money. We cut lines, we cut programs that were, you know, adoptions that were scheduled and put those on hold for a year. And so I can tell you that we really carved the overall operating budget down. Now, we talk about programs, right? So, you know, we could talk about prioritization. And yes, I mean, we could start having conversations about, you know, are we going to offer athletic programs? Are we going to go pay-to-play and things of that nature? But it was this board's, I believe this board's and my belief that this community, this school community, is not in a place where they would be endorsing wholesale carving back of who we are as a school district. I can tell you that the current budget that was approved represents the cutting of 35 positions, 35 positions across all different units. That is, you know, a fair amount of positions to cut. And, you know, what I would suggest in this economic times, and you're right, there are difficult economic times, is that there is a certain kind of reciprocity to that economic difficulty as well. And the reality of it is, is that the financial situation in which school districts find themselves, you're right, we are at a crossroads where we need to start making decisions about what programs are necessary to fund our core mission and how much we can realistically fund year to year. But this was a budget that involves significant cuts, but at the same time, it's a budget that funds a set of programs that we think are fair and in the best interest of the children that this school district serves. That being said, as a final point, as I indicated in my opening report, we are going to continue to look at what we've developed and try and create a budget that is sensible as possible and continue to look for ways to generate additional revenue as we did through our benefits plans up until we propose a final budget.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on, board member comments, reports, anything, Mr. Rothstein?
Yes, thank you. I'll keep this very brief to just offering my gratitude and compliments to the teachers, staff, and administration of the school district. Just an incredible undertaking to transition so quickly to this online platform to serve our students and to serve in so many different ways with meals and with all types of support. Appreciate, above everything else, hearing Dr. Cascone sing on Facebook and the incredible presentation from Ms. Mendez on the e-learning platform last Monday, which was really helpful and informative. I've been learning along with my daughter, who's a seventh grader, and actually heard myself say out loud to her, as I was showing her where an answer to something was on Google, it's not cheating, it's research. That's causing me to really drastically rethink my philosophy of education, but in any case, that's where we've landed. And I'm just impressed, very impressed at what we've accomplished and want to make sure that all employees are aware of how grateful we are to you for what you're doing here. And then finally, on a related note, just to thank you to all of the healthcare workers and first responders out there who are doing so much to take care of our community and our citizens, just a real heartfelt offer of gratitude to you and best wishes for your safety and health.
Thank you. Ms. Trick Scales?
I have a question for Mr. Calavano. What are some areas in which we may be saving some money during the closing? Or are we saving any money during this period that we're physically closed? And the second one is, again, from Mr. Calavano. Did we get any additional funding from the state for facility cleaning and sanitation? I read that Bill A 3839, as per the emergency bill package, that school districts would be getting some additional funding. So just wondering if that has happened.
With the additional funding? No, we have not received anything regarding that bill, but we are tracking all our costs. We started tracking it from day one, once we knew we were going to purchase, whatever we needed to purchase, the cleaning, the disinfectant wipes, the masks. We started tracking all those costs. So we will be ready when something comes out from the state for reimbursement. Regarding some of the areas, I think we could save, utilities will be one. The buildings are shut down, boilers are shut off. So hopefully, our utility costs will be much lower than if we were here. All the overtime costs that we would have for any type of buildings being open at night or on the weekends, that's no longer possible. Any professional development that we send teachers out to or staff members to or consultants coming in, that's not happening. So, I mean, I didn't really give it too much thought, but there's probably a lot of areas where we're saving. There's contracts that still need to be fulfilled for transportation. Transportation's not happening at this point. I mean, I know there's a bill sitting out there that there's some talk about paying the contractors the entire 180-day calendar, so we're waiting to hear what happens with that. So there's a lot of areas. Repair of vehicles, I mean, I can just go on, but yes, there will be savings.
Good. And as you said, you'll be keeping track of that as time goes on to see what kind of savings we may realize. But then again, we did pay our help desk staff.
Right.
That was unanticipated. So it'll be curious down the line just to see how the numbers pan out.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Okay. And again, I want to just say kudos to our central office staff and our building staff, administrators, and that we certainly know that e-learning can't replace what goes on in our schools. What goes on in our schools is amazing. The student-teacher contact, the support staff. And we're doing this to ensure that learning continues to take place. And so I want to thank all our parents. You know, you're used to helping with homework and projects every now and then, and as Mr. Rothstein said, this has taken it to a different level. And, you know, what's interesting is I've heard a lot of frustrations from parents, and we've seen all of the amusing memes, you know, saying, please, please, get my kids out of here and back to school. But our parents right now are heroes, too, because they have stepped in to do something that they don't normally do. And of course, you know, our teachers, this is brand-new for them, you know. Universities and colleges, they do this all the time, but not our public school teachers. So they are certainly our heroes as well. But I think this time is really giving parents and their youngsters a time to bond in a different kind of way. I had one parent say to me that this experience has given her such an opportunity to see the potential in her own child that she didn't realize. But having that one-on-one, I think, is immeasurable. So there are some silver linings. And I just wanted to personally thank Dr. Cascone for his outstanding leadership. He took this bull by its horns and initiated the joint task force with the township. And that put West Orange way ahead of this curve. And I just want to thank you, Dr. Cascone, for being proactive and for being a potential problem solver and for pulling it all together. The Office of Emergency Management, you know, has helped the school district in so many ways with the delivery of food and the delivery of the Wi-Fi and actually procuring those for us. And so I think it's from your foresight and your leadership that all of this happened. This didn't happen in other school districts. They're still catching up the foresight to move that spring break ahead. I think I said to you in one text, I thought it was brilliant. So I just want to say that publicly. So I think the board who hired you, we need to pat ourselves on the back. I feel that we are in very good hands, Dr. Cascone. So, thank you. That concludes my statements.
Thank you. Ms. Merklinger?
I just want to echo the same accolades for not just the community, but our parents, our community, our local stores, shops, restaurants, everyone that's just been helping out and chipping in, everyone who's been ordering locally and helping out our community members who do have restaurants and businesses within West Orange and just helping out with that. Especially want to thank and recognize Nikki and Perry Bashcraft for what they're doing on the shop local, feed local, save local. If you've seen that on social media, I encourage you to help in any way that you can with donations, offering to deliver or whatnot. And I want to thank our OEM, our WOFD and PD. A lot of those folks did grow up in West Orange and are giving back in service, and so I just want to recognize them for their work and dedication and being on the front lines, as well as our teachers and staff who are doing an incredible job with the e-learning. It's amazing. I tapped into watching Ebony's presentation, and I'm just blown away by what our teachers put together and what our staff put together with Dr. Cascone in such a short amount of time. Just seeing what some other districts are doing, it's not even close to what we're doing. So to echo what Terry said, we are way ahead of, I think, a lot of other districts, and I applaud our staff and our teachers for all their hard work. And I want to recognize, you know, all the teachers and staff that are putting out those positive videos. So I don't know if you've caught our phys ed department with their dance challenge or their dance-off. It was really fun to watch. Our football team did a push-up challenge, so I don't know if you caught that, but I think it was 1,000 or 10,000 push-ups across the board, across the team and coaches, and it was tagged someone else to do it. So congratulations to those folks. Our baseball team, I know, is meeting virtually and practicing virtually at home. So I just want to recognize just the amazing things that we're doing with technology just to keep everyone engaged. And I believe there are some resources. It is stressful. I will tell you, I don't remember everything about high school math, and I find myself trying to Google how to do some things and English lit, some grammar things that I've forgotten over the years. So definitely, you know, it does get stressful. So I know we have some resources for parents that I just want to remind you of, you know, you can tap into those resources with our counselors for assistance. I also wanted to just send out my prayers and thoughts to Mr. Seriano and his family. Mr. Seriano was my mom's track coach and then coached me in middle school, so definitely have a very big place in my family for him, so we're thinking of you. And I think that, oh, I just wanted to also recognize that there's still hope for spring sports. The NJAA released a statement on April 1st that they are not closing out spring sports. They have not shut down New Jersey just yet. There are some states that have already canceled high school sports, but New Jersey is still holding on. So there is some hope, and I just want to say I appreciate everyone who supports holding out until we absolutely have direction that we cannot do it. But for those seniors, we're thinking of you, and we hope that we can give you some sort of a senior season. And that's about it.
Great, thank you. Ms. Tonnycliff?
Hang on a sec. Sorry.
There you are.
I forget I have to do this. I just also want to say thank you to everybody who worked really hard in getting the e-platform up and running to ensure that we can continue educating our students in the best possible manner to Dr. Cascone for his tireless work and his vision for what this could look like, for Ms. Mendez, for all of her work. It's really buttoned up and very professional, and I'm really proud to be a member of this community and a member of this board. I really appreciate Dr. Cascone doing mindfulness work. I know for folks who are home, this can be a difficult time. It can be a very stressful time with your trying to work from home, with your kids home, and trying to be, you know, a substitute or a tutor for your children. There's a lot of stress involved, so being able to take on some mindfulness practices is really important. And it's also important for us to model that for our children when we can, if we can meditate or do yoga or do something that grounds us in the present, that's really important. And I just wanted to remind everybody that we also have a parent hotline, which you can find on our website. The number is 973-435-9637. If you need any help, please give our parent hotline a ring. And I also wanted to say to Lauren, to Ms. Lauren Groftizza, for all her work in ensuring that our board can meet virtually. I have severe asthma, so I could be severely impacted by this particular disease. So it means a lot to me with all the work that you did for those of us who can be at home and stay home, as we're instructed to do, that we're still able to conduct the business of this school district. So thank you to you and to all of the tech folks behind the scenes who made this possible. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, obviously, I have to agree with, you know, all of that. There's, you know, so many people... There's, you know, so many people have done so much amazing work from the technology department, the technology integration specialists, Ms. Mendez, Dr. Kascone, the principals, the teachers, the building support staff, it's, you know, from top to bottom, and of course, our parents. This has been, I think, a real learning experience for everyone. And, you know, there's been a few memes going around along the lines of, you know, everything from, you know, the funny ones to the more serious ones that are pointing out, you know, if you give our professionals the ability to, you know, create something, they're going to create something amazing and do a fantastic job without, you know, Pearson or anything else like that needing to be involved. And, you know, it's been great to see that. Thank you so much to everybody for everything they've done. You know, I think we're all looking forward to getting back to normal. But in the meantime, I think we have done, you know, a job here that, you know, God willing, there'd be a school boards workshop in October. We will have some nice presentations to put on about everything that we've managed to do here in West Orange. Dr. Kascone, anything further before we go?
Dr. Kascone, can you unmute yourself?
Gotcha. Yeah, so, gotcha. So in Mrs. Merklinger's comment about just the spring sports season, just reminded me to just kind of give a little shout out to our fifth graders, our eighth graders and our seniors, all students who are at a, you know, a big transition point in their academic careers here in West Orange and as such are, you know, going to, you know, are, are scheduled to participate in moving ups and culmination ceremonies and graduations. And so what I would say to you is, and a lot of students have been kind of reaching out to me on social media and say, oh, what are we going to do? And listen, we're, we are going to remain hopeful and optimistic at this point in time. I think that the next several weeks, three to four weeks, will be very telling in terms of the trajectory of this virus, of how it's impacting our society. I read something today that Governor Murphy indicated that, that the, the virus is showing the first signs of a flattening curve. And so, you know, let's take a look at this three or four weeks from now. Let's take this one day at a time and we will make decisions when we need to make them. And I think that's been something that's helped us through this process is we haven't made any knee-jerk decisions. We've made good decisions in the short term with the information we have available to us, even as much as we've looked forward. And so, yes, you know, we are starting to think about alternatives, but not going there until we absolutely have to. So let's hope, if you pray, pray that this thing will flatten out quickly enough that we might be able to enjoy more traditional ceremonies down the road, because at this juncture, we don't know. So let's err on the side of positive until we know for sure. And so I just wanted to let you know for fifth graders, eighth graders and seniors, I'm thinking of you. You're in our hearts and let's stay positive.
Thank you, and all of ours. Our next board meeting will be held April 20th at 5:30 PM, right here on the internet. And with that, I need a motion to go to executive session.
So moved?
A second.
All right.
Call in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, we are adjourned.